Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the 11 o'clock council meeting today. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you that you have blessed us with one more day to fulfill your will and purpose. We ask your continual guidance, Lord God, as we do the things that you have assigned to our hands to do. We thank you for wisdom, we thank you for knowledge, and we ask that you would continue to bless our city, bless our mayor, bless our city council, bless those that work for our city, and we ask that you would bless the constituents of our city, that we can continue to work in unity, and that we will be the example of love, joy, peace, and happiness, especially in the season that we are in and that we are coming upon. We thank you for what you have already done, for what you are doing, and for those things that you are going to do. We give you praise, honor, and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on November 21st. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of November 17th through the 23rd. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations. I see Mayor Ford has one this morning.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. We have the famous Ronnie Watkins here. I almost said Ronnie Watkins Ford, but I think we're related. All right. I have a proclamation from Mr. Ronnie Watkins. I'd like to read it now. It says, whereas Mr. Ronnie Watkins, owner and president of Ronnie Watkins Ford, began his career in the car business at the Pontiac dealership in Birmingham. Mr. Watkins moved to several dealerships before settling at Edward Chevrolet in 1983. Where he spent 15 years in the mentorship from Mr. Leon Edwards, Ronnie felt he had the expertise to start his own dealership. He started Ronnie Watkins in October of 1998 in Gadsden, Alabama, with 25 employees. And whereas Ronnie Watkins Ford is known for his many philanthropic contributions, in 2005 Ronnie Watkins Ford partnered with the Greater Gadsden Housing Authority to create and fund the Esteem Encouraging Students to Exhibit Excellent Minds program, which is designed to build self-esteem and provide meaningful incentives to children living in government-assisted housing who excel in school. Ronnie Watkins Ford has also helped many other local organizations, schools, the Salvation Army, Kiwanis Club, and the Big Oak Ranch Children's Home. In 2011 Ronnie Watkins received the prestigious salute to Dealers Award from Ford Motor Company for his dedication of time and resources to improve the community. And whereas Ronnie Watkins Ford has been awarded the President Award 12 times, Watkins served as the Automotive Dealers Association of Alabama District Ford Director, and he was the recipient of Alabama's 2020 TIME, that's a magazine, Jason, Dealer of the Year. He was also one of the select group of 49 dealer nominees from across the country honored at the 103rd Annual National Automobile Dealers Association Show in Las Vegas 2020. Whereas Ronnie Watkins is known to be a family-owned operated dealership that proudly serves Gadsden and surrounding areas. Ronnie Watkins Ford is one of the largest volume new car dealerships in the Atlanta region. Ronnie Watkins Ford has sold well over 35,000 vehicles since 1998 and services over 1,300 customer vehicles each month. Their customer satisfaction is consistently ranked among the highest with Ford Motor Company in the nation. Now therefore, I, Craig Ford, Mayor of Gadsden, Alabama, do hereby join with the Gadsden City Council in proclaiming Tuesday, November 28, 2023, as Ronnie Watkins Ford Day. Before I turn it over to Ronnie, I want to say his wife isn't here with him today, but I was on a tennis committee with his wife. If you don't know the business-minded lady, you need to meet Lynn. And she's a good boss, but he has great family, and Ronnie, we're honored to have you. I know all the council is also, and we want to thank you for your contribution to the City of Gadsden. I'm going to turn it over to you. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Actually Lynn had a planned trip with some nurse friends of hers, lifelong friends, and so I didn't think it was going to be this big of a deal, but this is a big deal. It's probably, I would say, one of the best honors, if not the best, I've ever received. And I want to just tell you real quick why. First of all, I had three choices. I had more, but narrowed it down to three. And this was a tough one. Craig can understand that, my wife being an Alabama fan. First one was Auburn, Bessemer, and Gadsden. Gadsden was going to be the hardest place to come. It was going to be a little bit more difficult. It was the worst-ranked dealership in the United States of America according to Ford Motor Company. But when I had sent them a plan on what I wanted to do, I said, I want to go somewhere where I can live in a town of about 60,000 people, you know, and Etowah County's 103. I wanted to be able to make a positive impact in the community and maintain long-term employees. I've worked in big dealerships and that's just something I wanted to do. I felt like that's where God was leaving me. So when it got down to those three, my minister, my wife, Gadsden was ranked number three. So I said, well, it's probably not going to be that, and Ford was really pushing hard for it. So I did what, the only thing I know to do, I got my, and at that time I was living in Greystone where everything was new there, everything was going my way. I was going to retire at 55, now I'm 47, I'm fixing to go deep in debt. And so I prayed about it, and God reminded me that go where it's not easy. And so I did. But here's the point, I'm not going to take a long time, I know everybody's ready to get out of here, but it's the people that were sitting in this 1998 that were sitting here, because we had nowhere to locate. We actually were going to go where the Toyota store is now, pretty well worked out a deal, and they said, hey, we really need some help in East Gadsden. We'd like to bring it back, Walmart's leaving. So there again, I pray about it. I said, okay, God, show me the way. So we start over there where the Chrysler store is now. We paved that lot, you paved that lot. The mayor and the city council spent $200,000 paving that lot. We went over there, had six landlords, were spending about $10,000 a month on rent, and it was over there for two and a half years, what we thought was 18 months, but it was so difficult to find a minimum five acres to seven acres to locate that dealership in. Toby Bennington came up with this idea, or Steve Means, or somebody in the city council. By the way, Robert Avery and Steve Means was always a wrestling match here, and I thought, man, that kind of scared me at first, but you know what? They were two of my best adversaries. The entire council was. And you were taking some hits because you put $200,000 in there, and then it's going to take $800,000 to fill that pond in. There weren't incentives going around then, and Gadsden was, you know, not that well off, but you stepped up to the plate. If the city council and the mayor hadn't have done that, I'd have been in Rainbow City. Not that there's anything against Rainbow City. I want anybody not to buy a car from me now because I said that. But you know, the thing is, I don't think you realize, I think you do realize, but I want you to know it from a business person, you know, what you have done for me, I should probably give you a proclamation for those, for Bob Echols, and Joanne Ray, and Doug, and Aubrey Mabry, I think that was her name, you know, they were saying, oh, I mean, she's going to be tough, I don't know if she's going to go along with it. Everybody went along with it, everybody. And it brought all of East Gadsden back, you know, with old tires, old aluminum building. Kmart, we knew was going to close, and we knew Walmart was leaving. Mr. McWhorter, never met him, I understand, he's a big Auburn guy, called me up, said, hey, I'm thinking about moving Lowe's to South Side. Do you think the city would talk to me? I said, call Bob Echols or Joanne Ray, they were wonderful to me, built Lowe's, Academy Sports backfilled it. It's this momentum that gets going, and so I'm going to close with this. You don't realize, I'm not going to say you don't realize, but you have tremendous potential. And I've been here 25 years, and my goal was to make it 25 years, I mean, not physically. I mean, I thought, well, I don't know what I'm going to do after 25 years, I may sell it or whatever, but I want to be a dealer for 25 years. Now my son-in-law's taking over and it's in good hands, but the thing is, I would, I'm not going to say I'd give anything, but the best years are so far ahead for you, it gets me excited. I tell everybody at Gadsden, I told them about Gadsden and Etowah County long before I got here. But you have the best mayor that you've ever had, and you have the best city council that you've ever had. I can't wait to see what you're going to do, and thank you so much for this award, and I appreciate each and every one of you, and anytime I can be of help to you, just let me know, but thank you. Thank you.
John Moore was one of the first guys I ever met.
They go to lunch sometimes. Do y'all believe Ronnie goes to lunch with John?
That's part of that long list of philanthropy you were talking about, Craig.
All right, count three, one, two, three, one more, one, two.
All right, thank you. Thank you again. Thank you. I thank you again.
Good to see you, too.
All right, thank you, Ronnie, and thank you, Mayor Ford. Agenda, item eight is unfinished business. We have none today. Item nine is a resolution awarding bid number 3519 for Gadsden Sports Park Phase Four. The city engineer has recommended the bid be awarded to Bob Smith Construction Incorporated, and the amount is $4,236,963.75. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So move. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to clarify, just for the record, that these funds were budgeted. This is not coming out of undesignated funds. These were budgeted in our budget. This has been in planning for, what, four or five years now?
At least that much.
Yeah, so this is just, it's super exciting to see Phase Four of a project that started several years ago finally come to fruition, but I just wanted to let the record show that these are budgeted dollars, this isn't coming out of undesignated funds.
Anybody else have a comment? Yes, not every day you're authorized to spend 4.2 million dollars, so.
I personally didn't know we could have gone in undesignated, so maybe we need to rescind that. But he's right, Mr. President, this was, you know, this is something that the previous council started, and the mayor, Sherman, Mayor Gotten, Frankie, and y'all, and the five others, and we're just continuing on. This will be the first phase that started with this council and mayor and completed, so, but it continues to dream of the previous council and mayor.
I appreciate that, and I drove over there just yesterday, just to kind of, I hadn't been over there in a week or two, and it looks really good, y'all. It's fascinating what's going on over there, and part of what Ronnie Watkins was talking about in East Gadsden in 1998, there's a lot of investment going on there. And then we've got a furthering our partnership with Gadsden State Community College, it's just another feather in our cap to partner with them, the way that the land is done, we're not purchasing the land, we're just leasing the land, and so it's just a great, if you haven't been over there, if you haven't been to the sports park, I mean, it's open, you can drive over there. You have to be careful, there is construction taking place.
You'll probably run into Frankie Davis.
Yeah, Frankie's over there.
He drives by there every day, but to let you know, I'm not good about keeping good secrets, but I'm having a meeting with Dr. Murphy today at 1:30. They're bringing a cross-country team to Gadsden State, and so Heath, our engineer, is helping pro bono his services as our fee to help them out, design the course, and we're looking at some other opportunities over there that Councilman Wilson may be interested in.
Okay, that's good. And speaking of Heath, our city engineer has done a marvelous job the last, oh gosh, he, what, four years or so? You've been drawing that up and putting it together, and so we're very fortunate to have.
He had black hair when he got here.
I think that project has really worked him hard, but Heath, thank you for all of your contributions to that. You've really pulled that together on a lot of different fronts and saved the city a lot of money in that process, so. All right, anybody else? Well then clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution authorizing change order number one for bid number 3473 for the renovation of the venue for the Industrial Development Authority offices. This is to reflect an additional cost for temporary HVAC equipment and the installation of an awning at the south entrance. The amount is $30,580, increasing the contract with Greer Building Contractors to $1,469,220. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So move. Is there any discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing preliminary engineering and construction agreement with state of Alabama for fiscal year 2024 Transportation Alternative Program Project. This is for downtown street scape improvements along portions of Chestnut Street and Sixth Street. The total estimated project cost is $1,185,244, and the city's estimated match is $385,244. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So move. Is there any discussion?
So this is a grant that was awarded to us, we're excited to get this grant, and that's just our match, so we're very excited about this. This is going to help the progress of downtown.
Great, appreciate the efforts on bringing the grant money. Seems like y'all are doing that quite often, Mayor, so your staff's doing a great job. Thank you. Any other comments? Not, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is new business. Is there any new business today? I believe there is. Item 13 is department reports, committees, boards. We have any committees or departments?
I think they're all out at the plane crash, so I'm going to report on that.
Okay, all right. If not, then we'll go to item 14, remarks by mayor and council. I know Mayor Ford's been working on a sad.
Yeah, so we have a lot of our departments out. We had a single-engine plane crash, Mr. President, and the council out in the Ivali area. Chief Reed and Derek Mummer, I want to tell you, I have received phone calls, texts from sheriff, coroners, everyone involved. We have a lot of excellent employees here at City of Gadsden, and they did an excellent job last night. We're all out there at the site, trying to help secure the site. It's not an easy thing to do. The victim has been ID'd, and the family has been notified. Excuse me, I got a cough, but we're praying for the family and everyone involved. There is some relationship with the Senator Katie Britt, is a personal friend of theirs in their office, so it's been, it was kind of, just kind of a sad moment. I contacted the brother of the deceased family member and contacted them, so they've been notified, they're on their way to Gadsden. He did not have any enough airtime to make it to an airport, since the single-engine engine went out, he started clipping some trees and gliding, and then went down fast. So just pray for the family, and pray for those all involved, and just thank the Lord that we have good employees who are able to help secure the area. Grow Gadsden meeting, we have two more left, and we're going to try to pack them in quick just because we're getting the master plan right after the new year. We're having one at Euro Brown Elementary Thursday night at 5:00 p.m., and then we're having one December the 5th at Bellevue, at Bellevue Church Gym. So those will be the last two that we have, and then everybody's district will have been touched. They will compile all the information, come back to with us with the master plan. So please take note of this, the Christmas tree lighting was going to be this Friday night. We had to make a decision today to pull the plug or to light the tree. We're still looking at the weather, it looks like that we're going to have inclement weather Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so we moved the tree lighting to December the 8th. One thing we're not going to do is cancel an event, we're going to reschedule events. Christmas on the Coussa was going to open Friday night, it will now open Monday night. So what we'll do, if you had tickets confirmed for Friday night, Saturday, or Sunday, we will honor those Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday of the next week. We will work with everyone that purchased tickets ahead of time. We're also starting something we've never done before, is employee training, is this week, and it's citywide for all of our department heads, and then it goes down to supervisors at Gadsden State Community College, and then also what we're utilizing Mr. Mike Perkins for in leadership training courses. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Let's go to District 7 and Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a great first weekend at Christmas at the Falls, we had good crowds, it was good weather. Even the Sunday night, I think it ran kind of drizzled that day, they still opened up and had a good night. Want to say thanks to everybody here, thanks for all we do, appreciate that, and had something else. I'll come back if I can ask to come in if I can.
I'm going to yield some time.
I'll yield the remainder of my time.
All right, Councilwoman Minatra.
This Sunday, December the 3rd, the Women's Club of Gadsden will host their annual holiday tour of homes from 1:00 to 5:00, and we're excited this year. We have four homes, and we have businesses that are part of the tour as well. Tickets can be purchased at the Women's Club on Sunday beginning at 1:00, and also they can be purchased, one of many places, but Johnson's Giant Foods also has tickets for sale, and we welcome all to attend. We hope we have a great event. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to start out by getting in front of it and saying congratulations to the University of Alabama on beating a 6-5 unranked opponent that they were supposed to beat by 15 points on fourth down. I knew it was. So congratulations, y'all should be very proud of that huge accomplishment. Also, just technical work on the sports park, just so you guys know, we didn't really touch on it, but I believe there's going to be some substantial improvements to the existing soccer fields that were there before, several upgrades, some new softball fields as part of this Part IV. The pickleball courts will be a part of that, and if I'm missing anything, someone else can pick that up. The street scape project that we just approved, this is a continuation of a thing that we've been trying to work on in the downtown area as it relates to expanding the kind of, the decorative and aesthetic feel of Broad Street off of Broad Street, and trying to push it out to some of the other streets surrounding that are a part of the historic district. So this will go down from Broad to Chestnut, and then I think from Chestnut over to Seventh Street, I believe is that plan. So what that, another big advantage of this project, which again is a federal grant project, so the lion's share of this, the cost of this project is being paid for by a federal grant, but what it really does is it solidifies the sidewalks and the street scapes from Broad Street and Doggett Tower area over to Johnson's and the post office, so that some of those folks with physical disabilities or challenges that may be in wheelchairs or motorized scooters of some sorts will have a really nice even ADA compliant sidewalk to where they can get to the grocery and back home safely without having to ride in the middle of the road. So I'm really excited about that, taking care of our seniors. And then the last thing we handled was the change order to Greer Building Contractors for the venue. As y'all know, we moved the Etowah-Gadsden Industrial Development Authority over to the venue quite some time ago. They ran into some issues with the HVAC units not being able to get them in in time, there was supply issues, so really all this does is allow them to install some temporary HVAC units, and I believe they're also installing an awning out front to address some flooding issues when it really rains bad over there. So just wanted to give some clarification about that. And then finally, I'll say on a somber note, I want to send my condolences to my good friend and business partner Brett Jenkins on the passing of his wife Holly last week. It's a very, very sad and unexpected event. Hollywood was, just turned 40 years old, so it was a really tragic day. Thank you to all the first responders here in Gadsden who were there on scene last Tuesday morning when I got to his house. They did an amazing job, and were very professional and very compassionate during that whole process, and I have to admit, that was the first time that I'd ever been in a situation like that, and I can't imagine first responders in this community having to go into situations like that every single day. Every day they have to deal with that. Even if you don't know the individuals personally, just being in that sort of an emotional setting has to be incredibly taxing to our firefighters and our EMTs and our police officers and detectives and the coroners. I just, I don't know how you do it. It's unbelievable. So again, my condolences to Brett and his daughter AJ. I know it's going to be tough for them, but they're surrounded by an awesome family and a great group of friends that are going to be there to help support them throughout this process. So I'm thinking about you, Brett and AJ. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Councilman Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have a few announcements here, so please bear with me, but I'll be really quick. Want to give a big shout out and thanks to all of those volunteers, organizers of the Community Thanksgiving Day event. It went very, very well, went out there and spent a little time, and so great attendance. I'm sure we'll be looking for a report soon of how many were fed, and all of those great accolades to those that were, that made it happen. It was great unity and just fun to see everyone working together and making sure that our county and all those that participated was fed. Also, a big shout out to the organizers and volunteers of the chili dinner that was conducted on Sunday at Twin City. A huge thank you to all of those sponsors, Linda Fay Catering and Delight Calhoun Plumbing, Lush Essential Aesthetics Lounge, Tipsy's Bar and Grill, Mr. Bowtie, Brandon Hall, Greater Ebenezer, Knights Heating and Cooling, Anderson Management, Twin City Bobby Ledbetter, and the visionary Chris Coats. Thank you to the Salvation Army, all of those that play a part with that organization, Celebrate Recovery, Freedom Church, Pastor Word, and others. A huge shout out to one of the hardest-playing football teams that played on this past Friday, and that's the Gadsden City Football Team. They did not come out with the win, but they went out there and they played ball. I think they played not only against the team, but they played against the referees, and yet they did a hell of a job, showed great talent to the coaching staff, Coach Ali Smith and his staff, to all of the parents and the community that came out. I think that the visiting side had well more than the home side, and that was refreshing to see how a community came and banded behind that football team and those staff for that game. And I can just only imagine how many we would have had if the band had been there. And so again, guys, this is not the end, this is just the beginning for those seniors. This is still yet the beginning for you as you go on and continue your athletic abilities and academics as well. Also, as it relates to Gadsden City, want to keep us in mind that they're still in athletics as it relates to basketball and other activities. Give a shout out to all of those academic scholars and other scholars' arts programs, and a huge appreciation, a huge appreciation to the chief of police and his staff, keeping those men, young men and women, safe, also those that came and participated, along with the Birmingham Police Staff as well. But definitely want to highlight the chief and his staff for their professionalism as relates to the activities of that game. The Gadsden City Band, mentioning them partaking in the 97th Annual Macy's Parade, I believe it was, in Philadelphia. And so huge shout out to them, their staff, band director, parents, and all that participate in making that band awesome. Alabama A&amp;M, also again highlighting them as a school that's. and then we thank you to all of the new businesses that are considering Gaston, as Mr. Ronnie Watkins gave his testimony today, it shows the growth that is coming to the city and how we appreciate you all choosing the City of Gaston. And being that I don't have to yield the remaining of my time to District Seven, and it has already been addressed, so I'll end by saying, roll tide, roll.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President, hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving, just wanna thank all department heads, thank you, Mayor Ford, thank you to the council, all of our first responders, we appreciate all that you do, we're looking forward to all the Christmas festivities, Christmas on the fall on the Coussa, the Christmas parade, lighting of the trees, as Mr. Watkins said, let's just continue to keep the momentum going here in the City of Gaston, let's continue to pray for the family, the victims of the plane crash, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Latham.
Thank you, President Beck, thank you for everyone that's here, whether in person or by social media, thank you for being here. I would like to, I was able to attend the united tree lighting ceremony on last night with the, for the Etowah County, and that was a good occasion, it was the united tree lighting, and I think that is the example of what this season is, it's a season of love, joy, peace, and happiness, and so it was a good event, I enjoyed it, and I look forward to, as Councilman Smith stated, I look forward to the festivities for our holiday season, thank you.
Thank you. I wanna make an announcement, that at First Baptist Church at the corner of Fifth Street and Walnut, we're going to have a food box giveaway Saturday morning at 10:00. So if you know of anybody that is in need of food, these boxes come from the food bank in Birmingham, there's gonna be either a ham, a turkey, or a chicken in each box, so it's just in time for the holiday season, so if you are in need or know of someone, we'll have about 200 boxes to give away Saturday morning at 10:00. The other part of the sports park that Councilman Wilson was referring to was the Champions Field. We're gonna have a field for special need students, and I guess really for all ages. It's gonna be real fascinating, y'all, it's a baseball diamond, but in the outfield, it's a, there's gonna be like a soccer field, kinda overlaid on top of the outfield, so, you know, we feel like here in Gaston that all children deserve a chance to play, and all families deserve a chance to go cheer on their children, no matter of ability level, so this is gonna be, I think, a real nice game changer for the City of Gaston, and it's not just for the City of Gaston, it's for, we'll probably touch five to seven counties, I think, Mayor, there's gonna be activities there all the time, looking real forward to that, looking forward to the whole park, but that especially, I think, is gonna have a, will grow to have a real special meaning for a lot of people and for a lot of families. We don't really have a facility quite like that in Etowah County, so this is much needed, and so really, really excited about that. I wanna thank Ronnie Watkins for his kind words, Ronnie's one of those, as you can tell, Ronnie's quiet, hardly know that he's in the room, but he's the guy that gets a lot of things done in the background in our community, and you never know that it was Ronnie Watkins. So we are fortunate that the Lord placed Ronnie in Gaston, as you heard, he had choice to go to Auburn, Bessemer, or Gaston, and the Lord led him to Gaston. And I remember when all that was going on in the late 90s, there was quite a controversy over the city spending $200,000 and doing what the city did at the time, but I think it was a wise investment, I think it paid off handsomely. Ronnie's touched a lot of families through the years with his altruism that he exhibits with every organization that is doing something good. Ronnie is usually financially supporting those organizations, so a big thanks to Ronnie Watkins and his family. And just, you know, y'all, just this time of the year, it's just, it's, I'm just thankful, I'm thankful for the mayor and the administration, thankful for this council, the way we work together, and the way that our city is growing and going. We all recently went to Atlanta for the National League of Cities Conference, the week prior to that, I was in Alabama League of Municipalities Fall Conference, and I can't tell you the number of people that approached me and bragging on Gaston, bragging on the administration, bragging on this council, but bragging on the direction that our city's going, and it makes me really proud to be a small part of that, but it makes me even more proud to say that I'm from Gaston, and our city is going places. People are talking about the City of Gaston all over the state of Alabama, probably all over the southeast. I know the mayor and his team have been to Washington DC numerous times, and that's paying off very handsomely in the return of grant money, but we're kinda the buzz, I mean, it's, that's just the way it's been told to me, that Gaston's kinda the buzz of the state, so thank you, Mayor Ford, and I'm just thankful that we are at this point, and I agree with Ronnie, I'm excited to see what's gonna happen in the very near future for our city, and for our citizens, and for our whole county. We're working well with our county commission, with our sister cities, it's just, it's just a new day, and glad to be a part of it, and hope you all feel the same way. So if that's all that we have, then we will be adjourned and be back next Tuesday, thank you.[1708.69]